Thank you. Let's bow our heads before the Lord. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts. And we come together this day to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage and strength. Be with this council meeting and help them be wise in their decisions made for the citizens of Lake Placid and the good of all those who have placed our trust and confidence in them. Give them insight to lead with integrity and their decisions may reflect what is right and good, Lord. Keep them from shortsightedness. Help them to make decisions to strive to be the good of all while guarding them from blind self-interest, Lord. Finally, dear Lord, grant them the humility to always seek your will in all that the council does and says. All glory be to you, loving God, now and forever. In Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Royce?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Okay, we'll go to consent agenda at number one. A, first is the agenda, and then B is the approval of the November thirteenth, 2023 meeting.
I'll make a motion. We pass the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any comments from the podium? Saying none, we'll take it the audience. All right, being none, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
All right, number two, CRA report 2022-2024.
Correction, 2022-2023. I have an error.
And I'll just say, the report's in the packet. If you have any questions, we'll answer as we go along.
This is a requirement from the state by March 31st to have an annual report. It's already on the website. It's already been advertised that it's completed.
Okay.
If it might, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be helpful, you know, for Eva or Kevin or someone just to take 30 seconds in case the public's watching and remind them, you know, kind of how the CRA works and where that revenue comes from, you know, that it's not additional tax dollars. It's kind of a holdback from the increase of value from the base 2017 value to the current value. And in our early years, we didn't have much revenue that came from it, but as six, seven years has gone by, now there is, you know, what we would consider for our small areas, pretty significant revenue, 150,000 plus or minus dollars. And that's why we're starting to see a few more CRA projects is because there is some funding there. And I just remind everyone that when we put the CRA into place, you know, we made the decision to use it, you know, almost exclusively for public infrastructure and not do any grants like other municipalities or other CRAs might for individual property owners. So I think everything I said is relatively accurate, but I just, I don't want there to be confusion out there as to where that revenue comes from.
Yeah, I think you're correct. And hopefully, if we can hear, it's called tax increment financing or funding. So it sets the base rate, 2017, when the CRA is created, and that's what the county and the city collect for general government from that point on. So the CRA is funded from the increase in property values from that point. So as those properties inside the CRA gain in value, that money contributes into the CRA. The CRA then has designated areas that you can spend the money on. So you can't spend it on employee salaries. You can't spend it on the police department. You spend that money on specific projects, and those are generally infrastructure projects, street lighting, beautification, those type of projects. And that's what the, you'll see in the next step, the capital improvement plan of the approved projects. And so in the early years, it's not a lot of money. It builds over time, and it also sunsets after forty?
Forty years.
Forty years. It will actually sunset, and then that money goes back unless it's recreated after that. So I think that's the coverage as far as the funding on that, and then we'll see the projects as part of the capital improvement plan.
Okay. Any questions on that? Are you from the audience? Okay, we'll go to the capital improvement plan, FY 23-24, with the town CIP.
So the capital improvement plan's fairly simple. These were approved by the, have been approved by the board. And so the, most of these on here, General Plaza Alleyway, the Lake Richard sidewalks, South Oak Street pavement, paving, those are all the POs have been issued for those to excavation point. So those projects should happen in the next couple of months. I will have a start date, middle of next week of when it's going to start. So anyway, but those are in the works, and those are going to happen very soon. North Main, Dow Hall, we've got the conceptual design from the county. They've done the survey. They've done the conceptual design. They haven't finished it yet, but they're putting, they're working on their quotes. That's the pedestrian crossing, which will actually be just back to the south from the intersection. There's an existing sidewalk that comes off of the parking lot, our parking lot there. So it'll cross a little bit back from the intersection on Main and Dow Hall. And so we expect that will also be in this budget year. I think Stewart Park Electrical has already been completed? No, not yet. Okay. So Stewart Park Electrical is still there, and so those are, those are kind of where the funds are at this point. And then we'll be bringing back at the June meeting, depending on what happens with Bicentennial Park, it's actually for the next meeting, but we may come back and ask you for some capital investment funds to do some paving or some area on Bicentennial Park, assuming that we acquire that property. So I think there's actually... And there is a recommended motion in there, and if, nobody has any questions?
Yeah. Recommended action is to move to approve the 23-28 CRA Capital Improvement Plan and adopt the Town of Lake Placid 2023-2028 Capital Improvement Plan by reference.
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Do we have any other further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take it the audience. Okay, seeing none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have an ordinance, 2024-01, an ordinance of the Town of Lake Placid, comma, Florida, comma?
Yeah, that's the reference. That's the town that you just adopted.
That's part of...
Yeah, that was the town's ordinance that we did by reference.
Okay. I just didn't know if I needed to read that into the... Okay, all right. Then we go to the CRH projects update. Pretty much done that.
Which I pretty much just covered, so, yes.
Okay. And I guess we'll go on citizens on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to talk about any issues around town that they think needs to be addressed? I will tell you, we are looking at several areas of the road, like West Inner Lake, just to the west of Devane Circle, and also out by the stop sign at Lake June Point, and then also Hartland Boulevard, where it almost intersects with 27. Those areas are county roads. We are, we are trying to work with the county to see what we can do to get them up to date before we really start to have some serious accidents there because they're really starting to get pretty bad, so, okay. Is there any other business to come before the CRA? Meeting adjourned. Oh, just...
Next one down, 2A.
Okay, I gotta find it.
What are you looking for?
Well, that's...
Yeah, I need it. Can burn over here too, if it's not.
Why is it way over there? Oh, here.
Okay, that's consent agenda.
Yeah, I mean, did you find what you needed to? It's from the town council agenda. Okay. Oh, here. Okay, there we go. Okay.
Sorry, guys.
No, I'm good. We're good.
We're good.
Still below that? Oh, is that the one? Okay. Yeah, I don't like this new system.
Yeah, I don't. Adobe changed.
He sent me a text, he was on the way. I know he's been very, very busy today. I think he's... I guess it's like anything else, just getting used to it. Oh, there it is. Now, the good thing is, he's got a year or so. That's like in 2025.
Oh, I thought that was this year.
No.
Oh, that's it.
You know, his daughter's at law school now.
With the tie over his shoulder, so it was like he ran all the way. Hold on a second.
You find it? They'll say it's because you ram all the way through.
Good evening. I didn't switch it either. It was just there.
Okay.
This is all consent agenda right here. You don't need to do anything there. Consent agenda, A through G.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon.
All right, being 5:44, I'll now call to order the regular meeting of the Lake Placid Town Council and the Government Center in the beautiful town of Lake Placid, Florida. We've already had our pledge of allegiance. I'll ask the clerk to please call the rule.
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Royce?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask the clerk to do the oath of office for Deborah Worley.
Hi, Deborah Ann Worley.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, defend the Constitution and the Government of the United States, the State of Florida, and the Town of Lake Placid against all enemies domestic and foreign.
I do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and Government of the United States, the State of Florida, and the Town of Lake Placid against all enemies, domestic or foreign.
That I will bear true faith, loyalty, and allegiance to the same, and that I am entitled to hold office under the Constitution.
That I will faithfully perform all the duties as a council member for the Town of Lake Placid, which I am about to enter, so help me, God.
Well, now go to consent agenda one, A through G.
I'll make a motion. We approve consent agenda one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the podium? Saying none, we'll take it the audience. I can't hear you. Please come forward.
My question is, does consent one include the minutes of all of the items A through G? Is that what you're approving right now?
Yes.
So I have a question on the minutes, if I may. At the last town council meeting that you weren't in attendance, there was a walk-on item at the end that wasn't part of the agenda packet, or did the town council have documentation for it? Where there is a grant that's being submitted to Senator Franklin that was due March 1st, and it was to give you authorization to sign that grant? My question is, how much money was the grant for? What exactly was the grant for? And what conditions the town needs to do in order to support that grant? Did you sign the grant?
No.
Mr. Mayor, did you sign the grant?
Yeah, because I wasn't here.
No, but did you sign the grant? It was due by March 1st.
I don't know. I'd have to check.
Eva?
I have not received anything.
But...
I don't believe the grant...
Because it's in the minutes, so it's part of the minutes.
Okay.
Do you want me to answer the question?
Yeah.
The deadline was extended. The grant has not been filed. A preliminary grant application was submitted. No signature was required. I believe you had a copy of that.
How much is the grant for?
I don't recall the numbers, ma'am.
The preliminary grant, what you don't...
I don't recall the numbers, ma'am.
What specifically is the grant for?
Do you have a copy of it?
I do not. I've asked for one, but I don't have one.
I was in and out of my office today, so I might have missed. Did you email it to me?
It's available.
And it wasn't discussed at the meeting. That's why it was not clear how much the grant is, what the grant is for, and then what the conditions the town is obligated to support the grant.
I don't know, want to misspeak.
Okay.
So I'm reluctant to do that from memory, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I said I'd rather not misspeak. I would be reluctant to do that from memory. And the grant has not been filed.
But you said something was filed, just an application?
There was a preliminary application. It's not a formal statement at all, not a formal application. You know, this really isn't part of the minutes.
It is, it is part of the minutes.
No, actually, it's not, ma'am.
Oh, actually, you can bring up the minutes.
The minutes are correct as written.
Okay. Can you bring up the minutes, Eva?
I don't have control. She's referring to the motion at the end of the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion's correct. The government extended the time to file the grant. The application has not been filed. A pre-application was sent to the congressman. The clerk will have it in your inbox tomorrow morning.
So the minutes, and maybe they need to be amended, I don't know, you can, says that Mr. Harris requested council approve a federal grant application for the septic sewer. The application is due March 1st. In addition, authorize the mayor to complete the, signature to complete the application.
And the minutes are correct as written.
Because there was no grant submitted?
Because that was the deadline at the time. The minutes are correct as written.
Okay, so you're...
Have changed since the minutes.
So you're saying you have a copy of the preliminary, Eva, that you can provide?
I believe Bart did email them to me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley.
All right, there is no consent agenda two. So at this time, we have the pleasure of having our Chamber of Commerce Director, Mrs. Jennifer Bush here, who has got a special guest she would like to introduce to everyone.
Good evening. It is Jennifer Bush with the Lake Placid Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to introduce, we have brought back the Miss Lake Placid pageant after a 10-year dormancy. We had 10 contestants turn out, and over 425 people fill the Genesis Center last, a week ago Saturday. And we were happy to crown Ms. Hadley Whitehurst, and I just want to give her just a minute so that you all are familiar with her. You'll be seeing her around town at events, but I'll give her just a minute.
Yes, I am Hadley Whitehurst, the 2024 Miss Lake Placid. I just wanted to thank you all for having me, and I'm excited to see all your faces around town at upcoming events over this next year, and thank you.
And I will tell you, she's already doing her job. I had the pleasure of being with her at the dedication of the hospital a week or so ago. And... That's right, the day after the contest, so we're really proud of you, and we look forward to having a great year with you. Okay, there are no public hearings. All right. Mr. Attorney, you've got anything?
Ever so briefly, the grant that was just discussed a moment ago was extended. The deadline is this coming Friday, and I would like the same latitude to allow the mayor to sign off on that grant. It'll actually be submitted electronically, so I don't know that there's a signature, but I would like his approval so you have an elected official approving. It will be for the purpose of extending lines, both gravity and low pressure, where we can do them, as well as hookup costs once the new plant is in focus, or whether it is constructed.
Is there a, is there a dollar figure on the grant, or is that still open?
That's still open. The Congress apparently expects to pay grants out in lumps of $10 to $15 million a year. In this situation, they like to see that you actually use it, and they want to know the total as well. Well, it's easy to come up with a few lines, and it really is all just an estimate. The science we had in it, when Joe was here, he got the engineers to look at the cost of gravity and low pressure at all of the subdivisions we were looking at. Of course, those numbers have gone up, so we'll raise those numbers to a degree, and I forget their total. The total project will be well over $100 million.
Over a span of a number of years?
Yes.
And this is just the application. We don't even know if we're going to get it.
Correct.
And then we still have to accept it if it is, in fact, granted.
Correct.
If it's...
And we'll certainly bring that grant back to you so you can see it.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any other further discussion on the podium? Saying none, we'll take it the audience. Bring it back, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Thank you. Anything else, sir? Kevin, do you want me to handle these?
You might as well.
Start down the list.
You still have, you still have a person to speak. He skipped that. You have a request to speak right after the...
No, he's, he canceled.
Oh, he pulled it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I should have told you.
The next item is to purchase a lift station along the south end of Green Dragon Drive, just south of the school. It would be from Smoke Land or Smoke Groves, I forget the person. It's the same price we paid for other lands along the road. You can see the rate is $60,000 per acre, and the price for this parcel will be $13,017 plus closing, closing costs and surveys, and we are ready to close. So I would encourage you to adopt Resolution 2024-07, authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver the closing documents and the clerk to pay the money.
Mr. Harris had...
For the Camp and Conference Center line, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I saw that. And the only question I had, and it's just a random question, there is another lift station there already. So you're going to remove that one and replace it, but we're going to keep that land for expansion there? I mean, where the other, the old lift station is, we're just going to keep that? Okay, so we're just going to keep that?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of Resolution 2024-07.
Second.
I'm sorry, Ms. Worley's questions wherever. I apologize if they weren't... Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the podium? Saying none, we'll take it the audience. Hearing none, we'll bring it back, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
We'll have to withdraw the next, the North Main Lift Station. We have not come to price on, to terms on price with the owner. Some time ago, you approved purchase of a utility corridor that can also be used as a pathway out Catfish Creek Drive from Lake June Point entrance, almost to Lake, to Catfish Creek. It's up to the point that you have several homes. We're not crossing the homes' front yards. We may have those discussions in the next few months. And it does not include a little bit of land very close to Lake June Point, but we've got permission from that owner to buy that one as well at the same rate. This would work nicely with the grant the town has to put in a multi-use path down that road to the new canal bridge, that's, or whatever they're going to do to that.
Whatever they're going to do.
I've heard it's to be renovated. I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah. I think there's still discussion on that, but...
Yes. The estimate was $270,000. This authorizes the mayor, when we get the numbers, to close up to $300,000. I hope it's closer to the 270. I don't know the exact surveyed acreage yet.
And as I recall, if it's all right, Mr. Mayor, if I, as I recall, Mr. Harris, this is what...
this is, it was important to get this quarter because we do not want to place these utility lines in the very limited right-of-way, county right-of-way.
Correct. When utility lines go in the right-of-way of another government, i.e. the county, state, or federal government, and that road gets renovated, if our utility lines are in the way, they get moved at our expense, water and sewer. So that would be devastating, um, cost-wise. So, a- and that road is already very narrow with very narrow right-of-way. So my recommendation is this is a, a really good $300,000 expense for a multitude of reasons.
I should have taken a ride with our utility director before the meeting, so I just had two questions. Can we go forward with a multi-use path? Is it going to, are we, can we do that before the, the lines go in? Can we do that?
Well, the multi-use path isn't funded for another couple of years, so it will probably be just after the lines go in, I think. Do you remember the year of funding for that path?
The path is on their fourth year out, so it's actually three and a half from now for the path. But either one, it doesn't matter which order, because it's, the multi-use path is 12-foot wide, plus four-foot buffer on either side. Still leaves us 10-foot for our utility easements we're designing in the corner, or I say corner of this side, depending on where you're at on Catfish Creek, but let's say the west side for the most part of Catfish Creek for the utility line, and then the multi-use path that go next to that.
I think that's a win-win. And then the other question I had was, how do we determine the cost for that?
We'll have a survey.
Okay.
And we think we already do have one, but we couldn't find it this afternoon at the last scramble, and my apologies.
But I think to answer Ms. Worley's question, we've already negotiated a price per acre. It's just-
Correct.
How many exact acres and parts of acres-
Correct.
-we're purchasing, if that was your question, Ms. Worley?
Yes, thank you.
So this would authorize the purchase at $60,000 per acre, same as the other deals we've been making. Just the minute we have a legal description.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, need a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion. I move the town council adopt the proposed resolution authorizing the purchase of the Catfish Creek 30-foot utility corridor to be used for water lines, wastewater collection lines, lift stations, and pathways.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discretion, discussion from the podium? Okay, hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Come to, come to the mic, sir.
My question is, uh-
Please, please state your name and your address for us.
Jack Comley, 607 Sunset Point Boulevard, Lake Placid, Florida. My question is, uh, the, the properties, the property that I own, we have utility easements in front, backsides, you know, all over the place, right? Why, why do you have to purchase this agree, uh, this land, I guess? Don't, don't you normally, aren't you normally able to just get a utility easement without having to purchase the land? Is it because you're going to put a sidewalk on it, or does that make a difference? Or, you know, if it's, if the lines are underground, the people still have the use of that land, other than they can't build a permanent structure on it? You know, but it's still, it looks like their property and everything, and they could use it for other, other purposes. So can you just clarify why you have to purchase it?
Neither side of the road has a subdivision like yours, so there's no plat that would set aside utility easements. The road varies in width all the way out. It's cobbled together, if you will. So this is the way we can obtain the utility easements now, rather than wait until plating. It's the only way, actually. And since we're obtaining and purchasing a utility easement, the thought was get it wide enough to make it a nice pathway for folks that like to jog, bike, and be outside.
Okay, I guess. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll bring it back to the clerk. Please pull the council.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Thank you. That takes care of C. We'll now go to D.
Okay. So let me pull up the, uh, so we did a conceptual, there was a conceptual done for Phase 3. Let me start back up just a minute. We did get notification that we have been approved for the Firdapp grant for the pickleball courts in the amount of $200,000. So at the May meeting, I'll be going to the, um, RPAC, yes, I'm stuck on Firdapp, RPAC meeting to request the additional funding to complete the pickleball courts. If y'all remember, there was a conceptual plan that had been done previously that had the ponds taking up most of the boat parking. This is a conceptual pond. This is not done by an engineer, by our, by Polston, who did the original one. This would have to go to Polston, because these ponds are just put in in a size. They're not calculated. There's future work that has to be done. But I just wanted to find out if conceptually y'all agreed with this and made any comments. It provides boat parking, parking for the pickleball courts and baseball fields. It does remove a couple of pavions, relocates or adds a pavilion over by the playground, and then takes out some eucalyptus trees, uh, which, um, which are where that one dry pond is showing. So we don't know whether that'll, what the sizes were and how they'll work, because that'll be for Polston Engineering to determine. But if you had any comments, or you wanted to see something different, then I needed to have that addressed before we went to Polston. So this is just kind of a consensus, if you want, from the board, because it's not an actual design. But, um, but I wanted y'all to see it and make comments on it. It was kind of interesting, because I went out there, this is 83 spaces of parking. I did go out and just counting cars during the Little League games the other night, and there were 81 cars. Now, a lot of those, some of those were parked in the existing, uh, pond, the dry pond that's in front of the small pavilion. So it will produce more parking than is out there today or typically needed on a, uh, on a baseball night, which is probably the fullest that gets, other than 4th of July fireworks. So-
Or it would just cause people to go down the other road and come in on the west side of the ball fields.
On the west, yeah.
Now, is this going to be impervious, or is this paved?
The plan shown is for paving. We may end up with some pervious parking based on pond sizes and how that works. But what's shown in the gray is all potential pavement. Again, this is not, there's no funding for this anywhere. It's just a conceptual. So it can go either way, depending on council choices. The roads obviously need to be paved. The parking, you could do either way.
And we've got, uh, it looks like more boat and vehicles parking than we currently have now, the way it's kind of laid out.
When you start delineating the road right-ofways into, it's more than what generally parks there today, only because of, you kind of delineate the areas and the spaces. You'll have people that'll take up two or three because of the way they park their boat. Okay. In particular.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McCarthy, I'm assuming if we approve moving forward this, I mean, this could even be phased, but then it would give us the, we'd get a design that give us the opportunity to go to TDC or other organizations that have money potentially to help in the development and improvement of our parks, and ask them for assistance with this matter, correct?
That's correct. That's why I'm kind of looking at it as a Phase 3. Once we compete, complete the pickleball courts, then we'll be looking at funding for, to do the rest of this. So really a Phase 3. Phase 1 was the, uh, the big existing, the big pavilion, and some of the drainages that went along with that. This is, pickleball courts is Phase 2, and then this parking would be Phase 3.
Thank you, sir.
Do you need a motion to-
Don't need a motion.
I think it's just something you can look at, and if you want to make suggestions or changes, yeah, we'd be, uh, we'd be more willing to look at. Personally, I think it looks pretty good. I, I think it would help with a lot of the problems they have down there with cars parking every which way, but that'll, that'll be determined later on.
Well, I, I think part of the parking is too, it is kind of, if you're from that side of town, a little more convenient coming down, uh, Dow Hall to come over and park on that side, but because there is a lot of parking over on the other side.
Yeah, there's a lot of people park over there, yeah. And that's, that's a nice thing. That's where the overflow can go, so. Okay.
Anyway, all right, then, yeah, this will go to Polston, just so you can get this. The, this pretty drawing was the work of our new town engineer. Thank you, Dennis. Mine would have been on a napkin. So, but I, I wanted to show you that, and so there is some, the, all of the, all of the stalls are to scale and, and laid out. It's the way it makes sense. So, um, so that's it for that. The, uh, two other items that I had on my, uh, on my report, the Lake Placid Police Department. Those plans are 75% complete. They're on track for a July, hopefully July bid. So that's on track. We did receive notice that we did not get the appropriation request for the police department, the $100,000 appropriation request. We are looking at a USDA Rural Development Grant Loan, and to see if we'll qualify for that, but we're just literally, just received that notification late last week, so now we're looking at this USDA loan to see if, if we will, uh, qualify for that. So we'll be bringing that back up, hopefully at the next meeting, after we're done, to see what the conditions are and whether we meet their requirements for. They have three different levels of grant loan combination based on size of the town, which we meet very easily. It's under 5,000. Then there's some poverty levels that, where our average income is. And that pretty much sets us whether we're 75%, 50%, or 35% grant. So we don't have those answers yet, and we don't know, we haven't contacted USDA yet to see what that process is. I can tell you from experience, USDA grants are very, um, technical in nature, as far as, and a lot of paperwork. They make SRF funding in this federal grant that we're working on, the 40 million, look easy. So, but it is a good program, and it is a funding opportunity, so we'll be looking at that. But we are on track with everything on the police department moving forward. Just another quick update on the $40 million project. March 29th, bids are due for, at 2:00 PM for the wastewater treatment plant. And then we'll be, uh, bringing those bids, assuming that we have good qualified bids. We'll be bringing the, a recommendation back to you on April 8th to, uh, to award that bid. And for the wastewater plant, which will then set the stage for the other ones that we can move forward on. The, uh, Lake Placid Camping Conference Center is moving forward fairly quickly as far as the installation of the pipe goes. We are still waiting on EPA. There is a Buy American requirement for that. We've had five manufacturers that has told us they can't deliver valves in less than 26 weeks. And so we've done a waiver request. They had to advertise in the Federal Register for 14 days. That timeline ended on Wednesday or Thursday. And so if they have any substantial comments, then we're supposed to get those and find out where we proceed. I think the only thing that would happen there is if they had some other manufacturer that we don't know about, and EPA doesn't know about in the United States that can produce those valves and supply them to us, then we may have somebody else to buy them. Otherwise, I expect the waiver request to be approved, so we can get valves ordered, um, and kind of finish. Right now, they're, they're doing pieces. Although, if you go down Lake Drive East, they've done pieces, and they stop because of where the valves have to go. And so they can't complete it. It's, costs them more money to do it that way, but it keeps them on track for the completion of the project. So, um, that's my update, unless anybody has any questions.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, Mr. McCarthy, to your knowledge, the Camping Conference Center, have, they, they've completed all of what I'm going to call their onsite improvements, and so once the public infrastructure's in and lift stations are built, I mean, they're ready to go, satisfied their consent order with DEP?
That's correct. All of their lift stations are connections. They've got to make final connections once we're upping running. Then they can make the final connections and, and, uh, demolish their septic tanks that are on their site. And they have, we have, we have received, um, notification that the SRF grant was approved for the water line. And they have also, so we're waiting for the paperwork on that, so we can get moving forward to bid the water line project. And they have awarded the contract to do the water lines connecting all of their buildings. So that, both sides of that are moving forward.
So, if I might, Mr. Mayor, it's, it's your expect, it is your expectation that most likely by the time the wastewater lines and lift stations are complete and ready to be put into service, a water line would have, will be built that will, will have been built that will serve their property. We will meter off of that in regards to how we calculate their charges for wastewater as well, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I believe that's all on the agenda. Debra, we'll go to you first. You have any comments?
I'd like to thank you all for appointing me back onto the council. I appreciate the support from you all in the public. Thank you very much.
Nell?
Nothing for me today.
Okay.
Really, scary, but nothing today.
Ray?
Well, first, let me say welcome back, Ms. Worley. You know, I, I know Ms. Worley has always had the best interests of Lake Placid in her hearts, and I know that, you know, she always, you know, has put in good work when she's been on the council, so we look forward to that continuing. So welcome back, Ms. Worley.
Thank you very much.
Charlie?
Welcome aboard, same thing.
Thank you.
I will turn it over. You want to give a little talk on the, uh, new playground equipment?
Alan Kiefer, Public Works Director. At Taylor Park, which is in Serenity Village, right off of the circle, just north of the circle. We just installed a large, uh, playground structure. It's not open just yet. We're having the sand delivered tomorrow to give it a safety surfacing. But it's expected to be delivered and spread out tomorrow, so it will be open starting Wednesday. If all goes well.
That's, it's a big improvement for the town. Thank you. Okay, uh, any of our department heads? Hey, have anything? Anybody? Nothing come for council? I will turn it over to our residents. There's anyone I'd like to say a few words? This would be your time. Okay. Begging none, if there's no further business to come before the town of Lake Placid, meetings adjourned.